All right, call to our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth? Councilor Caprio?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Fucie? Councilor Hodgson? Councilor Rose?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve this December ninth, two thousand fourteen town council meeting?
So moved with one correction, page nine, item sixteen. The vote should be seven to nothing for roll call because there was only seven in attendance that night.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
I abstain.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority meeting agenda. Item three, correspondence, citizen statements. Unfinished business, discussion in action. A, approval of sanitary sewer collection system contract with Viola Water.
Good evening. Before you is a proposed agreement between the Town of North Branford and Viola Waters, North America, for the operation, maintenance, management services for the Town of North Branford Sanitary Sewer System. Just a little history, we've been under contract operations in terms of management of our sanitary sewer for probably close to fifteen years now. The last nine years of which have been with Viola Water, North America. At the time, the last time we went out to bid, it was for three, three-year periods. For total nine years with Viola Water. At that time, their price was probably half of some of the other contractors and, to be honest with you, over the past nine years, it's been very good service. So in terms of vendor, they've been very satisfied with the operation they've been providing for us. We went out recently, again, the contract operations market changed a little bit. We only had one bid, Viola Water, North America. And basically, they, their current bid was pretty much in line with what they provided us for the past nine years. The current contract, basically, they've built in about a two-and-a-half percent increase over each of the four-year periods. So it's an annual increase, and they had a projected ahead, and it's basically, it's about two-and-a-half percent increase over the years. The proposed agreement is almost identical to the previous agreement, the previous agreement we added into nine years ago and have extended since that time. Pretty much the biggest change, we, the pricing, is current pricing. We've included call before you dig mark outs in there. That was done under, amended before to the agreement. With that, there's a provision for capital management services. Basically, we have to do something major, we could do it. Biggest provision in there is that we have final say in everything, and that we have to follow the purchasing, the town purchasing requirements to do it. But it just spells it out. I don't anticipate any big thing coming down the pipe. Maybe sometimes, maybe we may have to replace a pump or the like. There's smaller items too, in terms of any capital improvement, just to make sure we get three quotes on the smaller items, and they fall into place in terms of that. Again, those are the bigger items. The town attorney's office has reviewed the proposed agreement, and there's a letter from Paul Begaman from John's office regarding, basically approved it in terms of form. And the effective date is effective September first, two thousand fourteen. That was what we went out to bid for, just took us a little while to get it in place. We've been operating under just a monthly extension in the meantime until we get the contracts in place. And again, other than that, like I said, service, we've been very satisfied and very fortunate. We've had great service, and good response in terms of everything. So certainly, there is a suggestive motion, and any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I have a question. If something has to be replaced, that isn't covered in the contract, that'd be a separate cost to the town.
That's correct. They're running the system, they're, just, sort of in a nutshell, if there's a piece of equipment or a part of a piece of equipment they gotta buy, they have to replace it, and say it's $300. There's a reserve built in there, $25,000 a year, that they charge those materials to us, and then they do the work to replace it. So, and the reason that was in there and why we bid it that way, and it works very good, is they don't have to, you know, put a phony number in in terms of projecting what replacement material cost, the repair cost will be. They, if they need a bolt, they buy a bolt, and we get charged for it. And if they don't, and most of the time, it's been about $25,000 a year budget. Generally, we've gotten probably around $10,000 a year of that rebated back to us. It's only what they verify spend that we approve in terms of expenditures for those materials. But yeah, if something breaks, if we got a problem, if a manhole collapses, we're responsible for that. We would work with them to get them to, between them and the contractor.
They would inform you, and then you would.
And then we would have to authorize them, or we could go, you know, sometimes Public Works, for the small things, we, if something broke, they can fix the manhole top, and we just take care of it anyway. But that's not part of the contract, because it's an unforeseen unknown at this point.
What shapes the system in, Kurt?
I would say, generally, not too bad. We do have some leakage, we know that.
Have they been keeping up with maintenance of everything?
Yeah, yeah, they do the flushing of lines. I mean, our biggest.
What are, what are you talking about, leakages?
You're always gonna have, when the sewers are put in, there's some infiltration and inflow. When it rains, it rains real hard, the holes in the manhole, they leak. Sometimes around the manhole structures, there may be leakage. People can make illegal connections to the sanitary sewer. After they're hooked up, if they wanna, sometimes they'll put a sump pump in. We try to monitor that, we, you know, we look at everything when they're doing it, but.
And they're keeping up on the maintenance as they should be? You're happy with this company, obviously?
I'm very happy with the company. I mean, we had another one, and, I'll be honest with you, it was a lot of agita and a lot of concerns.
Well, I wanna make sure they're keeping up with the maintenance so we don't get whacked all at once with a nice big bill.
Yeah, I mean, we shouldn't. But again, the biggest thing that we may have to do, we may have to replace some pumps along the way. There's actually, we built it in the current sewer operating budget to do that over time. So we don't get a big, you know, a big hit. And they've already provided me a list of basically recommendations in terms of some of the capital items. And the biggest ones are some of the pumps, to stagger them in in terms of replacements or, sometimes it may be replacements, sometimes it just may be major overhaul.
So they do do preventative.
Yep, and flushing the line. They flush twenty percent of lines annually, that's an important part. And then we have some hotspots, because it's hard to believe, some of the residential neighborhoods, though, that the amount of grease can be, you know, can cause blockages in the lines. Occasionally, we do have that. Again, we have a rotating system in terms of where they flush, but once, or if there's ever a problem, and we have a blockage, then that gets put on the hotspot, and they do that every six months. We probably have six or seven of those.
And the homeowner should actually clean out their lines going to the street, too?
Absolutely.
That would be a good thing for them to be able to do, so.
Yeah, and again, people pour grease down the system. I mean, we put flyers out, because we try to tell people, sanitary sewer is not the catch-all, that you throw everything down, because what you put down that system may cause a problem for your neighbor. May cause a blockage, and occasionally, we do have. They've been very responsive, you know, right away in terms of taking care of them and flushing them out. But overall, I mean, the system, contract operations, has definitely been the way to go. We used to have a one-man sewer department, and that was not a good way to operate.
You're okay with the contract, John?
Yes.
Okay, that's it for me.
So we used to have one guy doing it?
One guy, one guy doing it.
Out of Public Works?
He was out of Public Works, quasi, and then we contracted out some of the other repairs and the like. And then a lot of new OSHA requirements came in, and then we had that discussion about fifteen years ago. It just, we would've had to hire more people, and the expertise requirements, just, and exposure to the town, just wasn't working. And I will say that, cost-wise, their cost for this year is less than what we were paying prior contract, probably nine years ago. So the cost is, has been competitive. It was less than, I think, every, all the other bids, I think it's still less than all the other bids were nine years ago. Same firm is providing services to Town North Haven. So.
Branford does their own house?
Branford does their own, they have a whole, much larger system. Well, not so much a larger system, but they have a large, they have a lot of personnel and equipment to go with it.
Well, their company built to do it that, and that's.
Yeah. So the maintenance and repair limit is that $25,000?
It's $25,000, and that's.
So if something needs fixing or broken, they bill out of that $25,000?
They bill out of that, and for actual expenses. Again, most years, on average, we probably, we probably spend $15,000. It's been pretty, but there'll be a year, in a couple of years, we spend more. But it's been pretty good that, you know, that's a budgetary number, and they draw from that. And then I do, you know, I get the accounting at the end, and it's, the number appears to be a real good number. It's got a little cushion in it, and we'd better have a cushion, and again, we get it rebated back and goes back into the operating budget.
So the flushing of lines is included in the $170,000 a year?
Yeah, yeah, twenty percent. And again, hotspots, you know, if we've had a problem, then they're, they do that every six months. And again, sometimes they've even, the sad thing is, sometimes they, I think maybe once, maybe twice, you know, they have flushed it, and then it may be a year later, there was grease buildup. And that's just the use of the residential neighborhood. Generally, it's more a problem with restaurants, but a lot of that because of the state requirements people have put in their grease traps, and that's, for the most part, diminished quite a bit. But like I said, I've been very pleased with the firm, their response to this has been very good. Their cost decent.
Make a motion to approve the Viola, Viola contract, whatever it is?
There is a suggestive motion.
Oh, thanks, you know I'm not that technical. The North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority approves a draft two thousand fourteen agreement for operations, maintenance, and management services for the Town Sanitary Sewer System with Viola Water, North America, Northeast LLC, and authorizes Michael T. Paul as town manager to enter into said agreement.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Caprio, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
The only thing I would say before we move off of that is, so, you know, the third year, we're up to $180,000. You know, we would wanna, we, our future councils and yourselves, we'd wanna watch that, because sooner or later, there's gonna, it's gonna hit a number with their two-and-a-half percent, when we could put two people on. I mean, basically, effluent flows downhill. And so, if you take the $25,000 out, and they're, and they're flushing twenty percent, but everything else is extra. So they're getting a hundred and, you know, $130,000 for watching stuff run downhill. So we just wanna, you know, I know, I guess, you know, they're there if there's a clog, or a break, or something, but that's all gonna be charged extra, too. So my only point is that $180,000 a year, you know, you gotta really start crunching numbers to see whether, whether you wanna get back into it or not.
More their benefits and everything than anything else you gotta worry about.
Right, I agree. The possibility, and I, and again, we have, it's a four-year period, and then we got in discussions a while back. That's why I think we did the three-year period the last time, because the Greater New Haven WPCA was talking about things. I mean, and that, something may change there. I mean, some of this regionalization may crop up, and we may, you know, be in the point saying, you know, does it make sense for us, what's the cost benefit? Does it or doesn't work? All those things are potentials down the road. The concept of regionalization generally is a good thing. I mean, you got the uniformity of services. But, and when that happened in Greater New Haven WPCA, we actually talked to them, the former town manager myself, but it was, by the time, you know, we expressed interest as soon as we heard about it, but they had sort of something already semi-created, and they weren't considering adding us at that point in time. But we thought it made a little sense to at least investigate the concept. We're a small, little cog in the whole thing, and you look at us, either potentially Greater New Haven WPCA, if Branford has an interest down the road at some point, or North Haven. I mean, we discharge all of them, and if it's a, it's a cost consideration.
Yeah, in regionalization, I'd be looking more to make a deal with Branford than New Haven. But, yeah, I think the numbers, in my mind, the number's, you know, not there yet, but it's slowly creeping up.
It's something to keep an eye on, absolutely, and, but.
Okay, thank you.
We've thought about it.
Thank you, Kurt. Okay, item five, new business. A, request to submeter water to start sanitary sewer, Twenty-Six Commerce Drive.
Okay, the property owner of Twenty-Six Commerce Drive, when they received their sanitary sewer usage bill this past year, they contacted my office and the fax office, and basically, their bill doubled. Rough terms, it used to be about $1,000 a year for many years, more or less, and it went up to over $2,000 a year. They contacted me, they had a concern about why it went up so much, and I told them it's based upon water consumption. They did verify that, they checked with the Regional Water Authority, and their water usage bill went up. Then they looked into it a little bit more, and basically, came back, but, well, there, there's a sort of a subcontractor on site that utilizes water as part of their landscaping, lawn care type of business. And they fill up tanks, and the water goes off-site, doesn't go into the sanitary sewer system. And they actually, and they also added irrigation to their property. Because they were quite surprised about the, the more the doubling of the water usage. I took a look at the property with them and their operations, and basically, they do have a separate irrigation line that's teed off, and they do have, within their billing, they showed me where the lawn care company has, and the tanks they have that they take and fill off-site. And they requested, their question was basically, is there anything we can do to, you know, if we're not putting the stuff down into the sanitary sewer, can we have some, you know, is there a way to get consideration for it? And we have done that in the past. Tilcon did it, does it still. This building, when it was Tilcon's, they had it, too, because they have the irrigation system. We submetered that. The Ice Pavilion, and I think Rosa's Orchards as well, are the ones we've allowed. Basically, I looked at it, and I've written something up, basically, for your consideration, a suggestive motion for you to consider, where they would have to put a submeter on basically the irrigation line and the water supply line to the lawn care business, hard-piped that in. And then that water could, the amount of that water can be deducted from their Regional Water Authority-generated water usage bill, and then bill them for actually what goes into the sanitary sewer system. It'd be interesting, you know, is it that number? And I do know their usage doubled, because I verified that with the water authority. But it would deduct whatever is not going into the sanitary sewer system. It would pull them off of what they're getting billed for. And they discount bill for, you know, things that generally go into the sewer line. Again, there is a suggestive motion for your consideration, and it basically requires that the two meters be installed, one to the irrigation line, and one to the landscape business supply line. And basically, that the meters be located as described above, and periodically calibrated as directed by the town engineer, that the property shall grant the town permission to enter onto the property to read the meters, and basically, it could commence once they, if the WPCA approves it, once they get the meters online. If they were to put them on there now, then July one, when we get a water bill, we would read what they, what didn't go to the sewer system, and deduct that from the bill.
Pretty simple.
Again, like I said, there is a suggestive motion for your consideration.
I'd like to move the motion as presented.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni. Moved by you, huh? Moved by Councilor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Item six, citizen statements and petitions. Regular town council meeting. Item seven, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. A, permanent project building committee.
Our next meeting is next Monday, the 12th.
Item B, Economic Development Commission.
Yeah, the Economic Development Commission met last night to review the process. Unfortunately, they, it was more a discussion, they didn't have a quorum last night, but still took the opportunity to prepare for the RFP process. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, the consultants are gonna be on the agenda for the meeting on the 20th. They want to come to make a presentation before they submit any final draft or a final report. They'd like to get the input of the council. So they're preparing that presentation, and we'll have them on the agenda for the 20th. And then that'll be an opportunity after that for the ADC to work with them to finish the final report, which will be used as a document to complete the RFP, or begin the RFP process, and start that, start that going. So we'll have Mr. Platus and Andrea Harwell here for the 20th.
Thank you. Item C, BOE, Town Council Communication Subcommittee.
Our first meeting of this year will be in February, it'll be on February 9th.
Item D, Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation had a special meeting last night, and it was basically just a discussion meeting on items. There was nothing that could be voted on, because it was a special meeting, and the agenda didn't allow for votes on anything. One thing that, there was a discussion in regards to was the Potato and Corn Festival. And a lot of it centers around the fund, the, where the money goes, and what happens to the money. And since I wasn't on the council at the time that the Potato and Corn Festival started twelve, thirteen years ago, I was wondering if Anthony Esposito could, for our next meeting, have some information for us as far as how that fund works?
Just happen to have the numbers ready for you.
Well, not so much the numbers, but the whole concept of how it came about, why they have a separate fund, it's not line items in their budget.
Well, that was Brannigan.
What's the, you know.
Brannigan started that whole potato festival with.
It was started before, it was started before Brannigan.
Did it?
Yes, because it's been twelve years.
Exactly. A brief history on it is that, when it started, Recreation has multiple funds, as you maybe were. They have the general fund operation, they had, previously, they had the community center fund, and they had one called Recreation Programs Fund. And when it started out as a one-day festival, and until about three or four years ago, it was handled under that Fund Two-Two-Six, Recreation Programs. It was able to be blended all together. And what, as it got more elaborate, and from one day to two days, three days, and so on, the thought was, let's make a separate fund of it, so we can track it more appropriately, give it. Previously, it was one item, potato festival expenses, whether it was police, whether it was bands, whatever it was, food, one item. By making it its own fund, we're able to give it line items, similar to the general fund, technical supplies, contractual, the whole nine yards. So that's the premise for making it its own fund, that you can better account for it, and show the various revenues. Again, previously, it was one revenue and one expense, buried in the Two-Two-Six Fund. They really didn't give you much information. You had to break it down on Excel sheets after the fact, which was doable, but why bother? Let's do it appropriately and make a separate fund out of it, no different than the Sewer Works Fund, or the Ambulance Fund, or all these other funds that we have. It's a self-sustaining entity, and the money right now is about $63,000 in there. It stays in that fund to be used for potato festival expenses.
Or, well, who has control over that money? That's the big question. Is it ultimately the town council?
I would say, no different than any other fund, the town council would be the ultimate. I mean, there's obviously committee structure underneath there, Recreation. That's a very good question, I'm not exactly sure who dictates it. Is it Recreation Commission, or is it Town Council? I could check to see the genesis of it when it was actually created, to see what the language was at that point. It's only been the last maybe three to four years that it's been a separate fund, but I could track it down for you if you'd like, you know.
If you could, because that.
That's the key question, you're right.
That question has come up a number of times. And so, and that is the basis for a lot of discussion that has happened. So if you could find that out. And why don't we do it as line items in the Park and Recreation budget?
Well, again, you want, you wanna know, the entity that by itself, is it profitable, not profitable? If you bury it in the Park and Rec, you're never gonna find that detail. If you have it separately standing out, you see, okay, these are all the festival expenses, festival revenue, what's the bottom line? If you bury it all in the general fund operation, your revenue would go into general fund revenue, it wouldn't be specific to the potato festival, it'd be buried with taxes and everything else, and expenses would be buried with irregular expenses. So the cleanest way to do it, to separate it out and give you true numbers, is to have a separate fund for it.
Okay, so all of the revenue generated at the Potato Fest gets deposited into the Potato and Corn Festival Fund?
That is correct.
Not the general fund?
You are correct.
And then all the expenses get paid out of that fund?
You are correct, yes, 100%.
All right, because I know there's a lot of misconceptions out there as far as where the money is going, and that it's being used on other programs.
That's not correct.
Okay, so I just, I wanted to understand how that fund works.
And even before, when it was buried in the Two-Two-Six Fund, it was accounted for separately, and we designated that fund balance for the retained earnings part of it that was created by the festival. So even though it was blended with the numerous items that she had in that fund, it never was used for those other items. It was always segregated out for itself. But now, it's ultimately its own fund, so it's even cleaner to track the pluses and minuses in the revenue and the cash.
How many bank accounts, they have, just one?
The town has one account, it's a pooled account that every fund uses.
Okay, so the Potato Festival does not have a separate bank account for the Potato Festival?
That is correct.
Okay.
All comes out of Town of North Branford.
Okay.
Goes into our account, comes out of our account.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay.
I'm done.
All right, so that was one of the things on the Potato. So if you could just find out about that fund, and who ultimately has control over that fund. And one other thing I handed out to everyone prior, at the beginning of the meeting, is. And one other thing I handed out to everyone prior, at the beginning of the meeting is, as liaison to Park and Rec, I received a letter from the North Branford Youth Football and Cheer Club. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I would like it entered into the minutes as an attachment. Basically what it was is there was a game, a playoff champion, a playoff game held at their field next to the police station and a number of cars got ticketed. And they've been parking there for years and years and at this particular game, they got ticketed. They know that the town council doesn't have any jurisdiction over this, nor does the Park and Rec Commission, that it's, it's the police commission because they are the traffic authority. This letter was also sent to all of the police commissioners. So I would like to ask the liaison to the police commission, Marie, if at your next meeting, you could just discuss this and see if there's any outcome from it.
I will, I'll ask that on the agenda.
Okay.
I would think somebody had a call and complained for those cars to make the police go down there and do that. I don't think they would do it on their own, but who knows?
Well, I'll, I'll ask that on the agenda.
Find out.
Okay. And that was it.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. All right, item eight, Town Managers' Report. Item A, Municipal Campus Concept Preliminary Discussion.
Yeah, there've been, this is sort of a follow-on to the discussion. We had talked about, you know, going kind of on hold with a facility, a large townwide facility study and, but yet we've batted around this idea of a municipal campus or municipal center or something of that nature. So I, I think what I wanted to do was just, you know, kind of lay it out in terms of the location. Obviously, when you see it, we know we have a lot of real estate there, but yet we have a lot of recreation facilities, you know, when we look at the police department and the public works and it's sort of placed in different locations, I don't know if there's ever been a master plan, but if you're, if we're going to do something, I think, you know, it, it does make sense at some point to look at the police department building. And I think, I'm sure that's been brought up before as well as possibly your, your phase one. And I mentioned, you know, maybe what we do is, the facility study was, you know, just townwide, too large, not something we, we want to take on. But again, coming to a focus of saying, okay, what do we need to look at? I think, what I think, one of the first things we need to look at is, is sort of step one is, is the police department and then what, if we, if the council decides that they can afford to or want to do that, begin to look at the numbers around that and what would the footprint there look? Does it stay in its current location? Do you move it to another side? Do you keep the same building and renovate or build behind it and then tear it down? What have you? I think those, I think we should embark on behind the scenes, myself with staff, to begin to accumulate some information and study a bit about what that particular facility needs because I think it ranks the highest in terms of dysfunctional facility.
Correct.
So I think that would probably be the springboard or at least phase one of saying, okay, what's the price tag on that, depending on what you, what you want to do.
The thing that I want to talk about a little bit is trying to get everything in a central place. We could get rid of this building, put a medical building here, company will come in. Thing is, I want to get rid of a lot of things in this town that are old and costing us a lot of money every year. We put tens of thousands of dollars into a lot of these buildings every year and we're not getting ahead. I think honestly, if we built a complex with a town hall, a police department, our ambulance building, and we need an emergency management center also for this town because there's a big thing about that, if we had everything in one spot, everybody's there, everybody can work together, we maintain one building, we sell all these buildings all over town that we own that really do nothing for us except cost us money. And, you know, there, there's a lot of other benefits to that too. I mean, the football thing right here, it says their field is small and they need new field and this and that. Well, they probably do because they've been playing on part of a baseball field for how many years.
Well, that was a temporary field that was put there 10 years ago.
Right, and they're kind of stuck in there. And I can see where, we need a larger scope plan. What we need, Michael, is to get somebody to give us a map of this whole town, all the property this town owns, all over the town, okay? And then we need to see if there are any restrictions in the covenants of these, of these pieces of land, buildings, whatever, as to what we could do with them. And we need to form, it's pretty much a business plan, to be honest with you, to how to get this town turned around, centered, bring in other businesses to this town. This town has a very specialized economic base, let's put it that way. And what we need to do with that base is draw on it and bring other things into it. I mean, there's, a guy wanted to build another ice rink in Norfolk. Maybe there's a piece of land around North Branford side anywhere, we could build another rink for him. Brings people into town, brings tax dollars, good business, things like that. I mean, I had, I had a crazy idea about putting a, an ATV track, okay? Have somebody come in and do an ATV track. We do an ATV, ATV track, all of a sudden all the farmers aren't complaining, these kids are ripping up their, their farms because they're going down to the track to race each other. You know, we kill two birds with one stone with things like that. And it's something we need to really think about because we know we're looking at redoing the high school, that's another mess. This building, they want to put what, somebody said an $86,000 generator here? For what? I think we should do one all in one spot where everybody can gather and we can even make a nice little field down there with a pavilion or whatever, so we can gather there, do our parades, our tree lightings, all together and be done with this. That's just my idea and my vision for this town and I'm only one of nine, but that's the way I feel that we need to move, is to do it, get it done with and stop piecemealing everything all the time. I'm done.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I, I just, behind the scenes...
We need that map of all the properties in this town.
Yeah, I mean, I was just focused on this because of, you know, obviously the...
Right, but see, I need, I need something I can look at that's going to give me the whole picture. Because there's a lot of crazy ideas that fly around in my head, well, maybe we can do this, maybe we can do that. And if I don't see the whole picture in front of me, it's hard to do that, you know?
So you say, we really, then we really need a facility study. We need one.
Well, I, I can figure out pretty much what's going to pot in town and what's can, can hold off a little bit. In a way, I almost hate to spend $100,000 for them to tell me we need a new police station and, and all that stuff because we, we know we need a new police station and if we can do all this either project at a time and build onto it, or we can do it all in one shot if our debt service goes down enough and be done with it, and then these buildings are good for 30, 40 years, we don't have to worry about it. But that's, like I said, that's just me.
No, I can look at other properties and certainly assemble those, but...
Could you email me the map of the whole town with what we own?
Sure.
Or email the whole council. This way they can look at it too. Because we need to know what's going on.
Item B, the MBIS School Audit.
Yeah, just real quick, that is, that's been finished and transmitted to the state. Hopefully, you know, we'll, I have no idea how long it'll take for them to turn that around, but Anthony and Michelle and working with the school turned around a, you know, a boatload of documents to, to give back to them to, you know, whittle away at that worst-case scenario. So hopefully we'll have a correspondence from them in the near future to tell us what the final number is. But I think they did a great job in terms of supplying the documentation to really lower that number.
And then item C, map of property lines between, either Sweet Drive...
Yeah, I think that you just, there wasn't a, I don't think the map was submitted last time or was handed out last time, so I put that in there. I know Kurt's working on it and it's a, you know, work in progress. I'm not sure if there's anything that he has that, that's new to it, but at least you have that. And I know he's, you know, taken it through the process.
One more little note, interest rates aren't going to be this low for not too much longer, I wouldn't think. It's been a lot of years, interest rates have been really low. So you might need to jump on it, whatever.
So I got a question for Kurt on this map. So is that a R40 zone?
Yes.
So the side yard is 15 feet?
Right.
Right, so we're only offering up 40 feet because they, they mowing the lawn on 40 feet of it?
Well, and again, this is a concept, this is, this was a thought and I'm open to any other thoughts. They have a fence back there.
Good thing, good thing they didn't go 100 feet with the fence.
Well, and the question is, what I did is I sketched it out to sort of match in what a fence was. I mean, as an alternative, and this is a preliminary thought, it could get reduced down to whatever, well, the rear yard setback, whatever the zoning setback would be for that structure to make it compliant, which is 20, I think is, is 20 feet. Again, I, I showed something and I was, I was just conceptualizing...
Well, is that 50, that's a side yard or a rear yard?
Well, the house faces there, so I was, you know, the, the front of the house faces the cul-de-sac, so I was considering that to be the, you know, the driveway comes in over there, I'm considering that to be the rear.
So that'd be the rear, what is it, is that 30 feet?
I think it's 20.
20?
On a, I gotta double check. I, again, but again, what I was just showing as a possibility, you square off something here and, and provide it over there. The interesting thing, East Shore would prefer the alternate B. Again, depending on what we do with the property, you know, the land trust may have a different opinion, you know, if we're the intention to turn it over to land trust in the future, you know, do you want to, alternate A may be the preferred thing. I was just trying to just conceptualize it and then initially get some, some feedback from the East Shore Health District. It's not great detail, but it's just to sort of come up with a, you know, a quick look at what could be done, but...
Who is Fox and Farms?
It was the old Barone property.
That's the old Barone property?
Yeah, I think SC Ballard owns it.
So that comes up to there?
Yeah, there's a big, it's like a 50-acre piece that, that comes up to there. Again, it was a preliminary thought, just to get, sort of get the wheels going.
Have you discussed with them, Kurt, whether or not there's a mortgage on their property?
No, I haven't, again, my, my first outreach was the Health District. I didn't have any information regarding septic system well and all that and I was trying to, that may have an impact in terms of...
Because a bank would have to approve...
Yeah.
They'd have to release pieces coming back to the town?
Right, I mean, that, that, there's quite a few steps involved.
And then where is everybody on the cost of all this?
That's the other question. There's, there's attorney fees, probably most of the fees.
I mean, I know, I had a boundary dispute with the town and, and I did a land swap. And I paid for the survey and I paid for my attorney and I didn't pay for the town's attorney. But, you know, this one here, I mean, I know it's like, it, you know, they bought it two years ago and they, they bought this thing, but shame on their attorney at their closing. I mean, number one, who buys a house that doesn't know where the land is? I mean, and again, shame on their closing attorney, but...
Would title insurance come into play on this at all?
No, it's just a survey coverage.
Oh, okay.
You gotta have a survey done and buy it with your title policy.
Oh, okay.
I mean, when people buy a house, don't they like say, where's the boundary?
No.
So my thing is, I don't, I don't know that the taxpayers of North Branford are, should be picking up the whole, all the pieces on this.
I think that's the smallest part of the problem. I mean, you're talking about a cost of the survey, what's, what's the survey...
Well, and then the attorneys, someone's got to draft it up.
Another map would be, a final map, a revision map, another $750. I mean, that's...
I mean, that really is a nominal cost, that should be their cost, I think. And where, yeah, they need an attorney and their attorney, whoever closed it, I think they have some splaining to do, as you would say. He's going to be more amenable to reducing his charge. I, I don't know.
So you think, and I know, I mean, I've dealt with land issues with banks before, they take forever. And good luck finding who is in charge at the...
We can't take it without the bank partially releasing it.
Right, I agree.
We're not going to take a piece of land subject to a bank mortgage and have these people go into foreclosure and then lose whatever we got back.
And then the only other thing that I'm thinking is, you know, if you're going to give that much land, when I, I don't know that that much is needed just because there's a fence there. Because this piece over against Fox and Farms and stuff, I mean, it, you know, up, up, and up, up, the land we're giving away is like high and attached to this big piece of land. If we take B, which I understand East Shore Health's concern with the septic system, which really...
That's going to be a driveway.
Carries a lot of weight.
Yeah.
But that piece of land is absolutely worthless.
Yeah, it's just a strip in the middle of nowhere.
And I also know when the land swap I was involved in, we had to get them appraised and, you know, the two parcels. So, you know, never mind the square footage. So I, I don't know.
Again, my, my thought process was I was trying to get the information, I was going to reach out ultimately, the thought was, to the property owner, any input, the land trust, I think that, that was our, that was the discussion, we intended maybe our recipient of the town piece down the end. Before I do anything, sort of discuss concepts and maybe come back with, here's what a lot of people think may work based upon the parameters we're looking at.
So here's the other thing, should North Branford solve this problem? Or should North Branford send them a letter that says, hey, your house is on our land, you need to get your attorney and tell us how you're going to solve the problem?
I don't see how they're going to solve it without our cooperation.
I agree, we have to cooperate, but I, I mean, so, so we don't know, they haven't got an attorney yet, we don't know who their bank is, so, I mean, I mean, I think it's time for them to get involved.
Yeah, they're going to have to be involved. Ultimately, I think they may need a variance, but...
Well, yeah, and that's...
If I've ever seen a hardship, this is one.
Yeah.
Kurt, what is that appendage going off the green line you drew in there?
Yeah.
I can't read it so soon.
Is that a drainage easement or something?
It's on the northeast side of the...
It draws, goes up into, further into Lot 12.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, that's, that's where they had their trailer, I think it's a trailer parking, trailer parking sort, isn't it? I, you know, that's stuck in...
That's their trailer parked on it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, at least they put it wholly on our land, it's not, there's no question whether or not it's a traveling boundary.
Is it only some paved tour or what?
Well, I mean, that, that's what the survey picked up, they, they...
Is that paved or just a driveway?
I think, I think it's a, I think it's crushed on.
Wow. Again, I, I mean, I feel bad for them only buying it two years ago, but, you know, they need to share in the pain. You know, I, I just don't see the town having to pay. I think that, you know, it's one thing for us to have our attorney look at deeds and all that, but, you know, the, the cost of correcting the survey, making a land swap and all that really should all be on them or their bank or their attorney or somebody.
Has anybody talked to them about any of this?
Just initially, they were here at the, at the last meeting, we discussed, you know, we invited them to it and, you know, that was the findings, the initial findings. All I, and again, all I did, you know, at this point was just sort of, I was trying to get some information from East Shore.
Right, you worked out some of the details of who's paying what and doing all that stuff.
Yeah, there's been really not much done and I agree, that's, that's the item that is missing, who does, you know, we're certainly part of the process, you know, are we the lead or are we the...
Absolutely.
You know, are we helping it go along and letting them lead?
Well, does John have to contact them or is, is there a lawyer, do they have a lawyer?
Kurt can just tell them, they really need to get their lawyer on board.
Yeah, that's all.
This is really their problem, they can't sell this house. Now that they know they got this problem, in good conscience, you can't go put this house, property on the market and assign a deed to somebody when you know this problem exists.
Right.
So they've got to resolve this. And the costs, there are some, but I think compared to the scope and problem they've got, they're nominal.
Right.
It's unfortunate, but I think... It's unfortunate, but I think they're gonna have to just deal with that.
Do what Joe tells you to do.
Yeah, no, we can certainly reach out, and they've been receptive. We'll follow up. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Yeah, the end of the trailer parking spot's only eighty feet on our land.
And there are already forty feet into that.
Item nine, community events and presentations. Item ten, citizen statements, petitions, correspondence.
Lot 1251, Middleton Avenue, and I was at the meeting last night where Rose was at. And one of the concerns we have as volunteers to help the Potato Fest continue is, we want the same mission statement for both the Town Council and the Rec Commission, as far as this, is it a moneymaker? Or is it just one hell of a good community event? And I think we would be much more comfortable if people would just treat it more as a community event, not as a cash cow. And something that really bothers a lot of us is every year we approach this fest, wondering when the Titanic's gonna sink. And I'm referring to the potato toasting device. I think in a month or so, there'll be another group with more facts than I have, I'm just a concerned volunteer, because we've put so much into this. If that cooker dies in the middle of the fest, the fest is gonna crash and burn. I think it can be creatively designed to work over a couple, three years, a lease to rent, there can be something done. But it doesn't make sense for us to keep, and I don't work the cooker, but I'm, you know, part of the commission, and we, you know, we're really concerned. All your eggs are in one basket, and that basket's got a lot of holes in it. But we wanna keep the fest going, the people in town enjoy it. But if there's pressure on the Rec Commission to make it a profitable, super duper money event, it's taking the fun out of it. Some of us are hardened now, you know, we, first few years, we really got up, you know, got excited about working there, oh, now you go to the meeting, oh, no, it's coming again. And that's not the way it should be. We should be proud to serve our other citizens in our town. We should be proud to have the infrastructure to go in there knowing that we can provide a service to these other people in town. There's people that love working that fest. It's like giving Franny a snow plowing route, but not giving him plows. I mean, if you give the Rec Commission permission, work it out somehow through their funds to rent to buy, and Dave, he's got some facts, I believe, and he'll probably be more willing to share that information. I just wanna see it continue as a community event, it ties the town together, it's a great time, and I mean, but you, you can't go in there with the fear of wondering, when is the gray ghost gonna die again? And it's come close a couple times. And without that, what do you do? I mean, I don't know, I, you just, and the gentlemen that run that pumped potatoes through that, they take a personal pride in what they can do with that machine. And if you give them an upgraded one, because people don't like to stand in lines. So, I mean, that's just my personal view, I was at the meeting last night, and I think Rose picked up on some of this too. But it's gotta be the same mission statement at both parties concerned, so when it comes time to compare apples and oranges and nickels and dimes, we're all on the same page. Rather, what is the town gonna get for revenue? And what does the Rec Commission have to meet for a bottom line? Especially, you know, being such a big event, and having bigger expenses, but making it work. And that's a thought. And I wanna just jump ship, Vin, back about the municipal center of town. When, it just came up to a boiling point, when both libraries are all of a sudden being built, rebuilt. You know, why couldn't there have been one central one, but unfortunately-
That's what I said.
Yeah, unfortunately, the wheels are rolling. But there is the hillside, just past the entrance to Public Works, a little bit north, I think that hill. And you could be creative with a, like a double entrance type building, where, you know, the bottom is open, but into the ground, and then in the top, you go back around. And that's, and you could have separate meeting rooms, so you wouldn't interfere. I mean, a good architect down the road could configure something that would work there. And again, but again, it really came to a boiling point when you, we, the town as a town really invested a lot in both libraries where it could have been done under one roof.
I, that's exactly what I said.
Yeah, so again, something to think about. But, and then, but if you go back to last month's meeting, like Al says, you can't afford some things, so it's a balance. Something to keep in your, you know, like you say, you need a long-range plan, though, like any business does.
Right, it's kind of like a business model, you have to bring in economic development, but you also have to make the town appeal-
Yeah.
To people who wanna live here, businesses that wanna come here, that's the whole thing. I mean, you, you have to kind of change things after all these years, and make people say, wow, look at North Branford. They're building this nice complex, they're bringing in whatever, a hockey rink, whatever. They're bringing in some good things, you know, it, it's, it's good, it makes people talk, and it makes people come here.
And to repeat, and repeat, and repeat myself, unfortunately, we're L-shaped, an L, you know, L on the forehead, yeah. Our biggest taxpayers have taken the biggest, most desolate section out of our town. I mean-
That's why we have to be very smart, we have to kind of like microeconomically-
You know, we're one of the few places where if you wanna go to, like, over to the Barone property, maybe from Northford, it would almost be easier to go through North Guilford and come in the back way. Go, yeah, go to a different town to get to your own town, so again, we're-
Hop on a quad from my house and drive right to my restaurant.
Right, you know, and, and again, so, and we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the highways, we don't have the rail sightings.
Right.
Our neighbors are sucking them up along ninety-five, and they're sucking them up along ninety-one.
What we need to do also is we need sewers down to Route eighty N.
Yeah.
Because there's land down there that's very old and ready to be redeveloped.
Yeah.
And, I mean, if we put sewers in down there, that alleviates a lot of the issues, because they have terrible problems down that end of town.
And like I say, I just, you know, it's, it's the nature of our town, unfortunately, we don't have a ninety-five or ninety-one in railroad, so it is a tough sell.
Absolutely.
But again, like I say, it's good to have a long-term plan.
Yep.
But, like I say, we couldn't stop the ball rolling when the, when the library was an issue.
No, I, that was before I got on here.
Yeah, so that's, you know, but I, I won't repeat myself again, I hope, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Item eleven, resignations and appointments.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Diane back to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
If you can just make a note in the minutes that she's the Board of Ed Rep for the TDS project.
Item twelve, unfinished business, discussion in action. Item A, I believe this is tabled, so. Item B, capital improvement approval.
As you recall, at the November meeting, the council passed it, consented to P&amp;Z for an eight twenty-four referral. It was favorably acted on by P&amp;Z at the December fourth meeting, and back before you folks for final adoption.
Anthony, you said seventeen or eighteen, or eighteen, nineteen, or that really drops?
Seventeen, eighteen.
I'd like to make a motion, be hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council adopts the two thousand fourteen, fifteen through two thousand nineteen, twenty Capital Improvement Plan pursuant to the favorable review by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
No.
Item C, update, report on Fowler Road, Tom Plainer, Carrie DeKes.
Yeah, I'd asked Carrie to come tonight and put this on, I know it's not something that, and the council obviously understands it's, it's the purview of the P&amp;Z, but that item came up at the last meeting, and I thought it'd be important for Carrie to sort of illuminate what they've been working on, and then the process, and-
I was down there yesterday, and it was kind of a ghost town, there was a couple big machines there, but that's about it.
Yeah, and we, you know, we did meet Patrick today, and took his input, you know, very, very helpful in terms of documentation. And legitimately, you know, Carrie and Kurt were present, we reviewed that, and they're continuing to review that, and there are some legitimate concerns there. And, you know, I'll turn it over to Carrie, and she can kind of highlight, but essentially, it's, it goes to, through the process, not essentially this body, but I felt it was important, just so the council knows that we're on top of this, we're working on it, and we're meeting to gather information and do due diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
So as Mike mentioned, this, and you're all aware, this is an active construction site, and it has been permitted through planning and zoning and wetlands. It goes back to two thousand seven, and there have been some changes made in the permitting process, changing from phases to steps. But the point being that in the past few weeks, it has been brought to our attention that there have been a lot of issues on site. So we've been dealing with those actively, mainly it's erosion control issues, so failed erosion control, which I've been working with the developer and asked them to repair those failures. And then also, where instead of having hay bales, which is something that has been a concern, they've been using mulch on site, which is fine, I've been on site at least weekly, if not more frequently, just to inspect all of these issues. The lack of a stormwater permit, permit is also of concern, and has been raised to the owner and developer. And also, just the sheer runoff on site of water, because obviously, there's no trees left, because they've cleared out the site, again, under valid existing permits. But the point being that I am working with them, I have also met with Patrick Rowland several times, also on site as well, to hear the concerns of, of him, and just trying to address them point by point, and going through all this documentation. So this is taking a long time, we're trying to be as thorough as possible. After the council meeting on December eighth, I believe it was, or ninth, the wetlands met on the tenth, so I raised it at that meeting. And they requested that I do a thorough evaluation of what's happening on the site, and be sure to just document everything, and then take the necessary action. So again, I've already outlined what I've been doing, but this is not something that we are taking lightly. We are talking with the, the property owner, and then tomorrow, excuse me, Thursday evening, we'll be talking with Planning and Zoning, and then requesting necessary action from that board as they see fit. But that's where things stand, so we did wanna provide an update. And, you know, we're, we're addressing these issues as they arise, one at a time, and, you know, working with the developer, and then also concerned residents or people of the public.
What type of, go ahead. The pictures we saw from the gentleman in the back of the room at our last meeting-
Yes.
Seemed to indicate to me that there was off-site materials being brought onto the property. Hearing you describe the issues that are on the property, you're talking about runoff, hay bales, storm erosion control, but you're not talking about any of the issues that seem to concern him, it's like a tale of two cities. Is there, in your judgment, material being brought on site from other locations or not?
Yes.
And what are you doing to address that, if anything?
So I've spoken with the property owner and asked them, you know, if the material has been brought on site. They claim, no, it's not, but clearly, there's way too much material on site. I've gone out there not only with the town engineer, but the Director of Public Works, to get their opinion about material being brought on site. The census is that yes, it has been brought on site. So we met with the owner on December nineteenth, requested a plan of action for removing that material off-site. And so they said that they are in the process, and again, these are all things that will be brought to Planning and Zoning on Thursday to request action from that board. If they are requesting that a cease and desist be issued, or a notice of violation, that's where I'll be making recommendations to the chairman on that issue.
With all due respect to the profession, usually it's lawyers that are taking the bad, bad lip at our meetings. Developers tend to look at everything through rose-colored glasses, they never do anything wrong. Everything they're doing is appropriate proper, and it's good land use. That didn't look that way to me in the pictures that I saw. And I'm a little bit dismayed that it had to get to the point where somebody had to come to this council and express outrage at what is being conducted out there and not being addressed. And now to hear that you're going to the P&amp;Z for a recommendation is fine, but is that not your job to bring these issues to P&amp;Z before citizen outrage is expressed? And to make a recommendation to P&amp;Z as to what should be done to correct these conditions? Or do we wait until somebody reaches the boiling point, and then try to pacify them by saying, okay, yeah, we're prepared to look at this and address it now? It just kind of seems like, in terms of citizen responsibility to the citizens that live in that general area, indeed to the entire town, you have an obligation to affirmatively address these issues, bring them to the, to the attention of the appropriate board, and bring a recommendation for action to correct what you see as violations. If we are hearing from citizens that you questioned whether or not there's off-site material being brought there, and you were told by the developer that there was not, and that's the extent of what we're being told is being done to address the situation, it really leaves me quite dismayed in terms of whether or not our land use and building regulations in this town are being adhered to and enforced, which is critical.
I think that the timing was also challenging in this, in that we had, I was out on the site at the end of, I guess it was, well, beginning of December. P&amp;Z met at the beginning of the month, we didn't meet, we don't meet again until Thursday. So as far as, you know, having the chairman come out there, that is an action that I could have taken, and, you know, gotten his support to take action immediately. I felt like having a cease and desist in my back pocket was something that was, you know, in my purview, and as I mentioned, working with the developer and talking with them. They've never said no to me when I've asked them to do X, Y, and Z on the site, they've been very compliant. You know, and there were numerous trucks that were reported to be going to the site, that was brought to our attention, and, you know, we, we've been working to address it.
I think this stuff's been going on a lot longer than before you were here, darling, a lot longer.
It certainly appeared that way in the pictures we saw, that this is not something that just cropped up in November or December of this year.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's, there's been going on, there's a lot of things that have been going on that shouldn't have been going on in this town for a lot, a lot of years, but we won't get into that.
So as I mentioned-
Stop laughing, Steve.
As I mentioned, I think, you know, planning and zoning is the, the next step, and that is when we can absolutely, you know, take action. It seemed an appropriate place in my mind, because that is the board that issued one of the permits, and-
It just seems to me, and I dare say to us, that if the citizen has to come before this council and complain that there are serious land use violations not being addressed, it seems to me that somebody's not doing their job. Maybe I'm misjudging that, and I'm prepared to hear an explanation, but I really did not like what I saw in those pictures, and, and to be told that no one was prepared to address that. Maybe that's not the case, but that's what we were told on December ninth.
Right, right, and the meeting on December ninth, I was not aware of, I would have loved to have been here, had I known that Mr. Rowland would be here to provide some support and explanation on, on my behalf. I would, I don't know if there's a possibility for you to go out to the site, but I would encourage you, I can show you photos that I've taken, the site is massive, and I'm not saying that there are not issues, but, you know, there are, and like I say, we are working to address them as quickly as possible.
I was down there yesterday, I was looking at it.
So I've got a question, and some of the pictures that Mr. Rowland gave us, it looked like there was a big pile of leaves. What's the developers say, where'd they come from?
Those leaves, I asked them that question, those leaves were brought in from North Haven, and they said that-
Time out then, I thought you just said they told you nothing was brought in.
That question was directed, well, they were talking about the brick and concrete, so there is, right. So they said that the leaf pile was being brought in, or had been brought in, to mix with the existing topsoil on site to be used as part of the development.
Okay.
So again, this is another-
I'm assuming you're going to be addressing that.
Yes.
Leaves are regulated, you know, I mean, you just can't bring in a whole, like, look like a thousand yards of leaves.
I'm not sure the amount.
All right. So now my other question is, and maybe you can educate me on this, and, you know, and I, I do work in construction and do site work. And I'm a little confused about the, so I need you to show me or get it to me. You said that they're replacing mulch, or replacing the hay bales with mulch. I've been at this my whole life and I've actually been called out in other towns if, if I had wood chips where it could leach into a, I had, I had one wetlands enforcement agent tell me that, you know, you gotta look at wood chips like you're looking at a beaver dam. And wood releases tannic acid, it makes the water sterile, and it is a huge no-no. Now, I do know that, and I'm going to call it a misconception in the state of Connecticut, because I'm working out in Mystic now and was talking to a developer there about some of those things. And I, I truly believe there's a misconception and somehow somebody's pulled the wool over someone's eyes that you can use wood chips as a silt fence. And so I challenge you to show me in the regulations, because I think you'll find it's an unacceptable practice is the only thing that the state shows on that. But if you can find it, and it's, and, and I'll just give you the heads up. I called a couple of engineers I work with yesterday and today and had them look it up. So I already know what the stuff says, but I, I think, you know, you may, instead of you educating me, I might be educating you.
Okay.
That, that's not allowed.
Okay.
But, you know, if you, I'm, I'd be glad to see it because boy, what an easy thing to do.
Right.
If it's allowed.
And I'd love to see what you have as well. I did not see anything in our regulations that prohibits the use of wood chips from, it's mine-
Right, it's at the state level.
Okay. It's my underst-
I'll get it for you.
Great. It's my understanding that wood chips have been used on site since the beginning of this project. And although hay bales are denoted on the plot plans, things change. I, I understand that with construction in the towns that I've worked in in the past, a lot of times it's easiest and most cost efficient to use the material that's on site. So the, just to be clear, the material, the, the mulch has not been treated. It's all native material. So it's the leftovers of the trees that were chipped on site.
Yeah, I think you'll, you'll find that that's not allowed by DEEP.
Okay. I, I think it is-
I'll, I'll get you the information since you aren't able to find it.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, discussion on membership with CMed.
Yeah, we're still, I'm working with Chief Sue. We're still investigating opportunities and, and options. First and foremost, with Valley Shore Emergency Communications, we, hopefully we'll have a meeting. We were trying for this Friday, but we've got to move that to next week and get a meeting before the next CMed meeting. But there's also potentially an opportunity with West Haven. Not sure what they have in mind, but we're going to explore that possibility as well. And again, it's, it's still a, a work in progress. CMed is still holding on at this point without any other towns leaving. But East, or Valley Shore maybe, may, may make the difference because it, it may not fit for us, but it looks like it may fit for some of the other towns in terms of Branford or Madison. So that would be a concern in terms of the overall membership in, in CMed if other smaller towns start, start breaking away. So Chief and I are going to try and get that meeting set up next week and look at the communication. Because the, part of it is that the core function, as we've mentioned before, the three core function are the patch in the field, mash casualty and mutual aid are, are the three core functions that we need to take care of. So it's, not every organization is equipped to do that. So we've got to make sure that they can handle that and we're not sure that they can. But it's, you know, I'll report back the, the next meeting after the CMed meeting on the 15th.
Okay. And by the outcome of this, it can change our annual costs, I'm sure.
It can't change what?
It'll change our annual cost.
Yeah. Well, right. We haven't gotten to the point, but we'd like to get to if we, if it's feasible to a proposal stage and, and find out what the numbers are versus staying with CMed if other towns are falling off and the increase just keeps going up. Right. Unfortunately, we don't have the options like other towns do in terms of going to a, you know, another, another option.
Item E, update on town self-insurance process.
Yeah, Council Rose had, had asked about this process and, you know, we're, you know, moving this along. And I, I'd suggest that we can get ahold of, of Dave Matthews, the agent, and talk with Scott over on the Board of Ed side. Obviously, they've, they've got to, they've got to be on board with doing this process. And we're talking about potentially a workshop or a work group next week in terms of doing a meeting. Maybe Council Rose, if you're available, the mayor or two members of this council, with myself and Anthony, along with the Board of Ed, Don Winicki and Scott, and a board member to do a sort of a work group of, of the understanding, the process and the nuts and bolts of pushing the option of self-insurance and looking at the models, looking at the, at the numbers. So, I mean, I would-
So, we're heading down into the 11th hour on this because, you know, we're going to be coming into the budget season and we have to have this in place. Whether it's going to cost us more or less, I mean, we really got to know. So could you explain to me again, and probably this is Anthony. So we have this, like, an insurance broker that kind of heads us in the right direction and you use him-
Throughout the year.
Every year you've used him and then sometimes you check and-
Right. He, he's a independent consultant for us that handles our medical insurance. He meets, he gets the numbers annually from Anthem and then he negotiates with them, meets with Don and myself typically, and we go over the situation. Any questions as we're talking about negotiations, what would, you know, the impact of changing? He works those numbers for us through Anthem. He's kind of like our conduit. Through whoever our carrier is, could be Anthem, could be Cigna, could be whoever it is. He's our conduit person. He's not related to Anthem at all, so he's not tied to them. He has mentioned the first pass of numbers he got from Anthem, about 20% increase. We've had a bad year for claims that I mentioned to you previously. He's going to request the fully insured quote and the self-insured quote that we talked about all along and also look at maybe even shopping around different carriers to see where that plays out. Typically, it happens in the January timeframe. Again, the first pass came in as of yesterday. As time progresses, also in our favor, if you look at the last 12 months, which I mentioned the numbers to you previously, the last month was actually one of our better months where our claims actually went down a little bit. So if that continues another month of the 12 months they look at, maybe it's a couple better months. Maybe that percentage of 20% increase comes down and negotiates for us, plus our actual claims go down. It's all tied to your claims.
So right now, if we had to lock into next year and left status quo, we'd be looking at a 20% increase?
21.25.
Okay, and then one more time, explain to me why, so are, there's different outfits that are this middleman?
Correct. We, uh-
How often, when did we, when do we look around and?
We, we started going through with third party, must have been six years ago. Previously, what happened was we were, we had Anthem, obviously all along, and our agent of record, their fee was built into our premiums. It was a mystery to us. You don't know what it was. Well, the year that we jumped out of that system, our agent was supposed to get $100,000. That was buried in our, in our premiums. Never would have saw that. And when we announced a bid, it cost us $22,000. So we had about an $80,000 savings from that year and going forward. So we did an RFP and this firm, the history on HD Seeger is they've been our insurance consultant on the property casualty side for 100 years.
Okay.
We've had a great relationship with a guy named Scott Sonberg runs the company. So we knew the philosophy of the company. They were very easy to work with. There was ovation. There was lock. And there was a series of people that bid, but their price range, even at that first go-around, was the 22 up to about $100,000 still. So quite honestly, in, in the years when we're doing the contract negotiations, it's a very, we're calling them a lot, changing all different plans. On the off-years, maybe once a year you see them. So the $20,000 is money well spent versus $100,000.
Yep.
And those off-years where you're not getting any, any benefit for it.
And so he does have towns that, or that group has towns that are self-insured?
Correct. He's going to get this information. I asked him for, when the numbers came out the other day, I said, can you give me some information about towns who have recently changed self-insured and also track record? And he said, you really can't look at track record because it's all geared to your claim. You could have a town that's got a tremendous track record. They have a very low claim increase.
Ten catastrophic issues.
Exactly. So it's, it's, it's how North Branford's claims are in relation to North Branford. But you can give us some kind of the process.
So this, this meeting that Michael's talking about, then we're going to, we'll put this whole thing together to come back to the full council with?
Right. I, I think that-
How you fund it, how it-
Exactly. Set up the reserves, the whole nine yards. Well, I think the concern that, you know, we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Right.
Board of Ed is like a two-third, one-third or a three-quarter, one-quarter. They're, they're the lion's share of our, you know, of our five-
We need them.
That, and the-
I know when we talked last year, Don Winicki was certainly a-
Right. But are the governing bodies on both sides of the defense on board with it? That's what we're trying to make sure. So that we go through this aggravation and try to work and then either you or the Board of Ed says, nah, we're not going to play that game this year. We want to avoid that. So by having this working committee that Mike's talking about, you know, let's talk about it, get all the, you know, wrinkles out of the system. And then when the numbers come in from, from Dave, does it make sense to go fully insured or self-insured? At least we all know the numbers. We all know the situation and different ramifications and make an intelligent decision. That's all you could ask for.
All right. Thank you.
Just, if I can just comment, almost all the union contracts have a provision that allows the town to, to change insurance carriers and/or self-insure as long as the benefits and coverages, and here's where the language varies, is the same or better than, but more often it's comparable. So I, the town shouldn't feel like, for instance, you just negotiated a teacher's contract, that that's the largest employee group we have in town. You don't have to, you, you don't have to wait three years to bring it up at the negotiating table. Your insurance consultant should be able to match the same benefits and coverages that you're paying an insurance company a profit margin and, and reimbursing them for fees that they pay to the state of Connecticut in order to sell health insurance. With self-insurance, those fees, those profits are eliminated. The town, it, the town basically is responsible, pays somebody to administer it. And with self-insurance, the town isn't even responsible for providing the same benefits that insurance companies are responsible for providing because the state statutes only apply to insurance companies. It's not something I would encourage. Some of the most important coverages that we have came through our legislature and were imposed on insurance companies. But my only point is that this meeting should include an examination of the respective contracts. And the worst that it could show, the worst that it could be, is that the benefits have to be equal to what they have now. Some, many contracts are worded in a very general way so that it could be 50% of the benefits are a little bit better and maybe 50% are a little worse. But the average is they're about the same. But you should check that and it, it's possible that you could get started on this now as opposed to waiting for contracts to expire.
Yeah, and I talked to Don about that on their side, so he'll have that answer for us. Any volunteers in terms of, or do we want to do it offline?
Well, what time of day are you considering this meeting for?
It's wide open, so I just want to do it, but Wednesday's not possible. So 12th, 13th, 15th or 16th next week, possibly, you know, during the day. It could be late afternoon. It could be, it's wide open, whatever.
Yeah, I, I would prefer, I would like to be there. I would prefer like, you know, 3 o'clock or after.
Yeah, okay.
I, I would like to be part of it.
Do it on a Monday or Tuesday. I can show up.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
4 o'clock, okay.
You know what, Mike, why don't you send an email to everyone?
So we would have lost money this year.
Send an email to everyone.
Good thing we didn't start last year.
That's right. See, we do. We know.
Mike, can you send an email to everyone? What time it is in that way?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I was, I was thinking of, you know, designate me or one or two in terms of workshop. Otherwise, I gotta, I gotta post it if we got forum in terms of-
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I could be there, but I know.
It would have to be a posted joint meeting, if I got more than forum on either side, forum on either side. That's why I called it a work group kind of thing.
Six.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll get a date and time out, anytime after 3:00 and stay away from Wednesday.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item F, Potato and Corn Festival 2014 budgets.
I think there was a request for this item and, and there's a packet of information in your, before you. And Rose, Roseanne is also here to, to speak and to answer any questions. Bottom line is, you know, it's profitable and, and take, took care of her compensation on top of that as well. So that is the same, well, I mean, I'll let Roseanne speak to it, but it's the same numbers as, as presented as October 30th that no new, nothing new has come in terms of bills or, or revenue since that time.
I just have one question. It says revenues, amusement rides and then expenses. There's nothing for amusement rides, so does it, they just give us a piece of their, what they bring in is what that is?
Yes.
Okay. Because you got to have one side and the other side usually, you know, if one doesn't come in and go out, something's wrong, huh?
How come, how come there are no dollar amounts of technical supplies?
Oh, that is right. How come there's dollar?
There are no dollar amounts. Every other, every other-
The back page?
Every other, um, no, it's not that, not talking about technical-
No, that's other contractual.
Oh, that's other contractual. How come technical supplies has no dollar amounts?
Um, it's one I have a drug, so I, I sent you what I have technical supplies with 14.
But each line item does not have a, this, this dollar.
The breakdown.
Breakdown. Here's a supplemental with the-
Oh, okay. Okay. When, I guess when you made copies of what I sent, it didn't take the full. Yeah. So I do have the technical supplies. I have, do you want to see what I have here?
Yeah, well, I-
I only have one copy. No, or I could, they could just patch it a little longer.
And I, I, again, I still don't understand why food is under technical supplies. Why isn't food a separate category? Is it, why is it, I just, it seems funny to me.
It's a supply. It's, it's on the 203. You can call it 207 food if you wanted to. And it's just one half dozen of the other.
Yeah, but I keep my food separate out of everything in my business.
It seems to me it should be a separate category.
We could break it out next.
Right. Happy technology.
The only, the only thing I have to say is I think it's wonderful. But I have talked to some of the volunteers and they say that, that Thursday really kind of messes up their whole schedule because they have to leave work on Thursday and Friday to get there. And it's kind of, it's a tough thing for all our volunteers. And I don't know if we're having problems getting volunteers or what, but I, I think if it ran Friday, Saturday and Sunday, it would probably be a lot smoother and you wouldn't have to worry about volunteers so much. Because people can do that. I mean, Friday night, boom, they're ready to go. They'll get out of work maybe an hour early and they'll work the weekend and that's fine.
Yeah, because ours was copied the other way. It wasn't, it wasn't one school.
I talked to one of the main volunteers and she was seriously thinking about whether doing it anymore or not.
Right. And so, you know, the issue has always been the three days versus four days. In 2013, it was the first year that it went to the four days. So we've had two day, two years under the four days of the festival. In 2013, it rained on the Thursday night. So we decided to do it again for the, you know, four days again because we didn't get a real good feel for the four days. Last year, it, we had- Uh, last year, it, we had a wonderful Thursday night. Um, that actually saved us because we had a rainy Saturday. So, again, the festival is, and the rec department is charged with not necessarily making a profit, but covering our expenses.
That's all we care.
Right. So, we have to look at that as part of our decision-
Right.
Of whether it's three days or fourth, four days. The rec commissioner at last night's meeting asked that I look at the, the differences. I'm going to take out the Thursday monies, and I can guarantee you it will be very close, because Saturday was quite a washout this year. Again, I hate to go backwards and go back to the three days, and then two more years down the road, you're coming to us and saying, okay, you know, if it's not gonna be a moneymaker, we have to cancel it, and then now we gotta go back to the four days. I think we need to give the four days a chance.
Yeah, that's fine.
We need to increase our volunteer base. Um, we, no one is, is forced to be there for the four days. You know, we welcome our volunteers, we appreciate what they do, and, um, but I think that until we know we can be successful on only three days, we have to stay with the four days.
Well, you can never-
And again, I'm going, I need to report this to the rec commission. I, I worked on some figures today, and they will be looking at it at their January twenty-sixth meeting, and I assume making a decision.
Well, you can never predict the weather, and to be honest with you, when it snows, I don't, I do nothing, okay, in my business. So, you gotta take the good with the bad. I mean, that's just the way it is. But, uh, I think if you had decent weather for three days, you wouldn't have a problem.
Right. But weather is no guarantee, as we know. So, I, you know, so that is the, you know-
That's fine.
And we're trying to, you know, look at all options.
Another year, two, whatever, if it works out, it works out.
Right. So, that's where we're going with the-
Okay.
Three days versus four days. And we hope to draw in more volunteers.
That would be good.
So, have you, I, I know you probably are obviously into planning for the two thousand fifteen Potato Festival. Have you gotten to the points of signing contracts or anything like that, or set, situated anything?
Nope. So, um, our request for proposals went out for the amusement companies, cause that's always the biggest item. And I have had two, um, amusement companies submit proposals. And so, how we go about it is now we will compare the two as to the percentage. They'll give us the number of rides, um, you know, all their little details. And we, in the office, will compare the two and choose an amusement company.
Well, are you asking for a three-day or a four-day on your request for proposal?
It says four days right now on the request for proposal. It says four days. But nothing has gone out. I met with our craft vendor supervisor today, you know, when we drafted our, our, um, application for that. And again, nothing can go out until after January twenty-sixth, when the recreation commission makes the decision on whether it's three days or four days. So, you know, I mean, and we're working on things, but again, nothing, and we know the weekend. I think we've all agreed on the weekend. It will be the weekend of August sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, which is a full weekend, the first full weekend in August.
You know, it might be a good idea if you could, like, condense the minutes to your meetings and maybe like, send them to Michael so we can email them out to us, and we keep, keep up on what you guys are thinking and doing.
Michael does get our minutes.
Okay.
So, if, I mean-
I mean, just give us the gist of the whole meeting.
Right. And that, well, the minutes aren't long.
Right.
Page or, page or two, you know, we do, you know, make them very brief, so you could certainly send them on. And I know Rose is, last night when you were asking about being, um, CC'd on all this stuff through the rec commission, I could also do the Potato Festival information if you would like.
Sure.
Okay.
Might not be a bad idea to send that out to the whole council. I just, it's hard for me to keep up on everything, because I'm always at my business. And unless I get the information, an email, or something, I'm really, don't know what the heck's going on.
Well, I could, I, I do, you know, a mailing when we have a meeting. I, I'd be happy to include you.
Cause I, I work nights, obviously.
So, I think, I think as a council, you know, we've got, uh, you know, it's decision time again. You know, last year, we put the funds in there to hire somebody to, to run it. Uh, not to, you know, to, to try and make it happen and see, you know, just, just where are we? So, so if you look at this, there's fourteen thousand dollars, uh, fourteen thousand eight hundred and some dollars left over. So, you'd say that's good, but if you look up at the top and see that there were twenty-two thousand dollars in donations, we're screwed if people decide not to donate. So, you know, hopefully you got some good people that are donating, and, uh, and, uh, with hard work, it could keep going. But if the, if we're gonna go forward, I know there was some question as to, you know, and this thing just kinda got started and run. And so now we have questions with the money, who can spend the money? And did it ever, and this is for you, John, so you gotta pay attention now. Did it ever, did we ever get it cleared up? As to, you know, the last I had heard, and I might've missed a, a year or so, the committee that runs it has never been appointed by the council, or did that happen? And did we make a legal committee? Do we have how many members it is? And are people appointed?
We only appointed that one year, but they have never, the council has never-
Formed a legal committee.
Correct, correct.
So, I think that, you know, it's time to either do that or not. Especially if you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars in revenue that this adjunct committee is, is in charge of, that, I, I mean, you know, there is a procedure in town that probably should be followed.
Could I just respond real quickly on that? As far as I could understand the process, is that the committee or commission that we would come under is the recreation commission. That's who I report to Pam. Pam reports to the recreation commission. The committee that meets is strictly an advisory, they call themselves the festival committee. Uh, they're strictly advisory, as, as far as I know, unless I learn otherwise. But they're an advisory committee, and they're made up of the supervisors that, um, head each of our different divisions, craft vendors, food vendors, um, our amusement ticket booth. And these are just, you know, volunteer citizens that come out, and, you know, they need something, I try to help them get it. I have, I do have a sponsorship committee, a, a volunteer committee, a parking committee. And so, the, the festival committee is just made up of the supervisors of these other committees that are strictly volunteers that come and help make the festival work. But I believe that I, uh, the real committee that oversees the festival- Right, is the recreation commission.
This town is run by strictly volunteers.
Right, yeah. We're all volunteers, yes.
So, I get the point of strictly volunteers.
But I'm just saying, I believe it's the recreation commission that actually would be overseeing the festival. Um, you know.
Well, it's, it's certainly not a board of permission that either was, that's either created in the charter. Uh, there are some, there are some boards and commissions that have actually been created by ordinance. And, and that's, we're talking about a committee, which sounds more like something the town council, uh, would create, a subcommittee of itself to look at something. Or in this case, apparently, this is a homespun park and rec committee.
Subcommittee.
Yeah, the, the word committee does not have the legal significance of a board of permission, or certainly the council. So, I think it's probably-
So, this is all, it's good the way it is?
Uh, yeah, I don't see-
I think if we monkey with it, we're asking for trouble, to be honest with you, cause all these people are volunteering their time, and they're doing a lot of legwork and everything, and, I mean, it, it's, honestly, it's probably more work than it's worth, but they do it for our town.
You know? And, and the, some of them may be paid in their fundamental jobs, like for park and rec, but they don't get, they don't get paid perhaps from their representative capacity on this committee, let's say. Unless they do it on their work time, I, I don't know. But, uh, this is, this doesn't come under the other, more significant issue that was raised recently with regard to appointments to boards and commissions. It's a committee, it's a de facto committee of some kind. It wasn't appointed by the council. We have subcommittees. Uh, we could have, we could have one councilperson be appointed as a subcommittee. But this is something that sort of spun out of the parks and rec. So, I think we're okay.
Okay. Well, I know we've had discussions about this for several years, so I just wanna make sure that-
I don't think, I don't think they have any authority to spend any money to, other than I heard them say, I don't know.
So, then park rec makes the, they spend the money?
Yeah, it follows standard town procedure. Pam signs off on everything as a department head. And it comes, comes to our checking account. Money comes in and out of our account, and all the expenditures follow a normal procedure where Pam signs off on them.
Okay.
So, the bigger question then is-
Go back again.
Is-
Guppies.
Okay. Is, is the fund, and how it's spent, and, and who controls it, and what can it be spent on?
Well, apparently, park rec controls.
Well, that, there's, there's a difference of opinion on that, and that has been the discussion over the last- No, the proceeds from the year. The twenty thousand that was paid to Roseanne last year came out of-
Proceed from the year before, didn't it?
Well, no, I believe the line item that says recreation on here for twenty thousand, is that where Roseanne's-
You are correct.
Yeah, so, so it's one of the expense items on there, the twenty thousand one thirteen. That's the twenty thousand.
Right, so it's paid for.
It, it came out of that year's proceeds.
Right.
So, then, so, if we have nothing to do with it, why did we create the position? And why do we have to reappoint that commission? Should park rec just be doing that?
Yeah, I, you're, it's a valid point. I mean, it, it started here, though, it, it-
It started here because last year Pam came in and said, I'm done with the festival.
They said it needed help. It was an, sort of a, I don't wanna say it's a first-time experiment, if you will, and, and that's, the council did that. And so, that's why I felt it was, you know, timely to say, okay, um, that we're embarking on rolling or renewing or reapproving going forward. Maybe the, maybe the commission was the right place. I don't know. The parks and rec, I don't know. But it grew out of this, this council, the idea.
Ultimately, if something goes wrong, and hurricane so-and-so comes in on the weekend of August sixth, there's gonna be a lot of expenses out there that aren't gonna be covered, because there's gonna be no operations. Ultimately, those expenses are gonna land on this table. So, I really think we need to keep control of hirings, major expenditures. Certainly not micromanage the festival, but the large expenditures like buying a new cooker or hiring personnel, I don't think we should be pushing control of that.
No, I don't think so. We should either, Joe. I think you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, where are we at? Business as usual?
It's not very much.
Well, you know, the town council has, um, customarily exercised that control. It really goes to whether or not there's gonna be a Potato Festival or not.
Well, here's the thing. I mean, you know, if the, if the group of volunteers loses money, we're gonna have to pay the bills. I mean, the-
Well, it's gonna come out of, it's gonna come out of the fund that has been established, the sixty-some thousand that's-
Sixty-three thousand dollars.
Right.
That's there.
You gotta go a long way under sixty-three thousand dollars in one year. Again, if it's a washout, you're gonna have the expenses upfront that you incur, but I think you're not gonna, I-
Uh, the operating expenses.
I believe you came forward last year with a worst-case scenario. I don't have it in front of me, but you recall getting that for-
Yes.
A worst case, and I don't think anyone near sixty-three thousand dollars.
Right.
Right.
I think we're good.
So, where, we got a cushion?
We got a cushion.
Okay.
Okay.
Kinda like the self-insurance business.
It's a gamble.
Okay, item thirteen, new business, discussion, and action. John, this is on your legal opinion. Does this go on the executive session?
I'm sorry?
Item A, legal opinion regarding police-
Yes, I missed this little gem, huh?
Is that going on the executive session? Are we going through that now?
Uh, I don't know whether it needs to be discussed or not. It's what it is.
Isn't it over with?
Yeah, it's over with.
I would say it's over with, yes.
Okay, so then, you know, I can discuss it.
Next.
Item B, Potato and Corn Festival two thousand fifteen, reapproval of Roseanne Krajewski, I'm sorry.
Krajewski.
Krajewski as festival coordinator.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council authorizes the expenditure of twenty thousand dollars of Potato Festival funds to be used for paying Roseanne Krajewski to serve as the two thousand and fifteen Potato and Corn Festival Coordinator.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Caprio. Roll call.
Eric Candelara?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawn?
Yes.
Councilor Rosa?
Yes. Sucker.
Item fourteen, citizen statements and petitions.
Good evening. Dan Arman of Chidsey Drive. I've been, um, supervisor with the Potato Festival for about seven years now. Um, spend a lot of time on it. I believe in it. I think it's good for the town. Um, I do think, though, I would encourage council to consider appoint, officially appointing, um, a Potato and Corn Festival Committee or Commission. Um, I think some decisions have been made, you know, against a majority of our wishes. And that is like a four-day festival, um, a majority of the committee is against. And it seems to me that decision, when decisions are made, there's a lack of accountability. Um, and, you know, and then we're told that, well, nobody's forcing us to do this. Well, we're all volunteers here. Nobody's forcing anybody to do anything. We all care about what we do. And, um, I think if the council were to appoint members, it will give us a, a structure and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you.
I promise not to speak as loud as I did last month. My name is Patrick Rowland, and while I'm not an attorney, so I do not represent, but, um, my in-laws do live on Knatchell Road. And as I said previously before, I, I was a resident of North Branford. Um, in, in direct rebuttal and in, in support or comment to, um, to zoning enforcement and wetlands officer Duquez, um, you guys saw the pictures, and, um, much to the credit of the, um, town manager and Ms. Duquez, they've, they've actually spent an awful lot of time going through not only the pictures and the, the information that I've provided. I provided an additional email to the town manager. I'm not sure if it wound in your package. If not, um, I'll make sure that, that I, I resupply that to him. But, um, attorney gets my beat said last time that I was here, that there's some things that, that I need to hire an attorney to, to do, and that the purview within the, the legal structure that the town council has the ability to address. And I believe I've outlined several items, including waste, hauling, refuse, the illegal dumping, and the activities that are going on currently at Fifty Fowler Road. Um, one of the interesting things that, um, Ms. Duquez mentioned is that they've indicated that the material that was on site was, was actually there. And much to that, I, in the email that I provided to the town manager, I provided two links to a, um, a Gmail map at, at Google Maps, as well as a Bing map. And I'm not entirely sure why, but those two apps that I've included them in the, the package that was resended to you are about three years apart. And the Bing map actually shows where there's no construction at Fifty-Five Fowler Road. And very clearly on this map, you can actually scroll in and get very, very close, almost counting the raccoons in the trees. And you can see there's no debris. There's none. There's no piles of rocks. And if you remember, one of the largest photos that I presented to you was of a very large pile of the construction debris that had a series of stumps and roots and rocks on the other side of that debris. And so, one of the first things, aside from the fact that the permit says if there's any non-native stuff that's in the property, abandoned cars, junk, the very first thing you do before anything else, you have to take all that bad stuff out. So, that's the first thing. It's kind of a, a, a bell ringing in the back of your head. But, so the first thing that you do, you just take all the trees off the property. You cut up all the wood, you sell the wood. And you push the stumps over. You make some mulch that you're gonna use later illegally. Um, and then you've got these, these stumps that you pushed into the wetlands. And then somehow miraculous, all this brick and cement is on the construction side of all the stumps in the wetlands. So, I find it really incredulous that somebody would indicate that a thousand cubic yards, I mean, this, this thing's as big as a high school. The, the photographs show a, 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 an amount of debris- The photographs show a, a, an amount of debris brought into this property that is not even remotely visible in any of these Bing maps from the early 2010, 2011. And this map, actually, I, I didn't get to the building officials' office to double-check when the, the date was, but you can see right at the curve of Fowler Road in the link that there is no proper, there is no construction at 55, but if you scroll back just a little bit, the new building right on the corner of Fowler Road and Route 80 is actually under construction in this photograph. You can see the, the yellow cats and the bulldozers and stuff going around that building. So whenever that building was built, which was about 2009 or 10, was, was when this photograph was taken. On the Google map photo, you can see that the pond, the wetlands, all the water that's in this Bing map is gone. There is no pond, there are no wetlands, and all of the activity that has occurred has pushed into that. But more importantly is, what I wanted you to actually take the time was to go into Bing maps, click through and actually look on it and see whether or not you think that there's a pile of debris in the magnitude that's matched in the photographs that are provided not only this time, but as well as the junk drive that you have. And focus on the photograph that has the stumps in the wetlands, followed by the mound that goes up and over with all the bricks. So that's the, the addition, the first thing that I wanted to kind of bring your attention. And in the email that I provided on Monday to the town manager is a series of roads and construction debris going all the way to the back of the top of the notch, where they've actually used this material, which was ostensibly to be hauled off of site. And I actually have a copy of their written response from Cherry Hill that indicated that it was their intent to withdraw this material by the end of August 2015, whence there was, should never have been there in the first place. And so those are the two primary concerns or direct response to the fact that the native material was actually there. And if you look at the photographs carefully that are included with the package that I provided on Monday, there are pieces of tile, granite, all this kind of stuff that are construction debris. And in the citations that are provided to the town manager includes specific regulations that are under the town charter, that are under the purview of the town council, that gives you the opportunity and actually, I think, to think that it actually gives you the responsibility and the requirement to take action against these specific activities. I'll speak on Thursday night to the zoning, specifically to the zoning, but the questions that I ask, and I ask you to ask again, and ask the town manager, are they currently in compliance with every single one of the requirements and regulations, not only of the zoning, but of the inland wetlands? And I believe that the answer to that is no. One of the first things that was required in both the inland wetlands as well as the zoning is that there be a state permit filed with the Department of EEP. EEP does not have, I provided the letter to the town manager, excuse me, there are additional other violations that are of significant concern. The 500 trucks, 1,000 trucks, how much ever it is to make a pile this big, of this debris that's there is being ground and you've had complaints, you've had significant complaints over a period of time. Mr. Kennedy complained in September minutes that there's dust, additional noise. And so what has happened is they're doing activity on the property that shouldn't have been part of the original zoning, that should be something that not only the zoning and inland wetlands is concerned about, but everybody in town, and again, as I asked, my, my parting shot last time was that, I think that you should be appalled as much as I am, but I think that everybody in town that I've shown these pictures to, the construction people that I've showed it to, the piles of dirt, the estimate of the number of trucks that it took to bring this much product in here, and on top of that, the leads are in their written response are material that was brought into sight and clearly is not part of their permit. So I really, really, truly think that the town council, per my correspondence with the town manager, has sufficient knowledge and information for the council to take action, separate from my presentation that's gonna go to zoning, that speaks to zoning issues, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You dropped a pen right next to the microphone.
My name's Kevin Kennedy, I've been with you guys before, I'm over on Wildwood Road, I'm adjacent to the Fowler Road project. I just wanted to update you guys on the outcome of the September 4th meeting where I was here with Mr. Sacks and Mr. Anderson, and we were talking about the noise and the dust problem. I had filed a noise complaint just prior to September 4th, which is what got it on, the junk to begin with. At that meeting, you were told that they would be finished with the rock processing in two to three weeks, and I was also, you were also, I was told that, that the noise metering equipment was out for calibration, had to be, then I was called a couple of days later and told that it had to be repaired, then I was told that it had to be replaced. At that September 4th meeting, somebody on the council, I forget exactly who it was, it might have been Mr. Rose, who offered up that he had seven of the units available that could be borrowed and used for this metering. It was, Sacks texted me on October 28th that he was finally done and they were gonna move the rock processing off-site. Two days later, I got a phone call from town hall saying that they were now able to come up and do the noise metering and check in on this. I mean, it just seems like all the breaks go in this man's direction and the town has to do a better job at acting fair and make, controlling these matters. You wanna do the Sierra Road project, I don't see how you're gonna get any town backing to do anything like that when projects like this are not managed effectively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Steve Torino, Clintonville Road. Unfortunately, please take into factor that I'm talking as a citizen only. I would just ask, strongly urge that there be a recommendation prior to my attendance at the park rec commission on roles and responsibilities. I think it's absolutely imperative that that is defined since some of these issues come about. And as you heard tonight, it goes back and forth on who does what, when, where, and how. Again, please consider me as just a citizen speaking. The rumor is there's a meeting on the 26th, and I would hope that there'd be some clear cut definitive answer on the roles and responsibilities, specifically for the Potato Festival in regards to the park rec commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion to go into executive section.
Make a motion to move into executive section per section CGS 1-206B for strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation on the regional water authority to include the town manager and the town attorney and the town finance director.
Thank you. Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.